I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a time and a place for the regular board meeting of the Marshalltown School District. Today's date is December 7th. I would like to welcome all of you who are with us this evening and a welcome to those who are watching us on delayed broadcast or live stream. Allow me to introduce the board members at the table with me. Beginning on the right, we have Karina Hernandez, Nick Nico Aguirre. It's my first time. Sean Heitman. From the left, we have Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, Sarah Faltis. At the center table with me, to my right is Paul Atnewbold, the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schudy, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am B. Niblock. We have a pink sheet for you to sign up on if you would like to address the board during public comments. You'll be given five minutes to speak. The board will not be able to respond to your comments as per board policy, but we thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission of the Marshalltown School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move Agenda Item 5.01, Marshalltown High School and Anson Elementary Preliminary Design and Cost Estimates, to right after 4.05, when we have the state legislators here and before we go into the technology items.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Heitman, Aguirre, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Sodders?
So first for recognitions, we have a group of students who was recently named as All State Music Honorees. So that's a huge achievement and I just wanted to let you guys have a chance to meet them all.
Kind of spread out.
Yeah. You guys can come off now if you would like. Mr. Umthun is here as well. So I believe we have Elijah Thiessen.
Yes.
Ms. Hoffman and Rebecca Stone. And then Mr. Brett Umthun is here as well. So I will...
Did he do really well at All State?
Did he do really?
Yeah.
I was honored for the All State Choir.
I'm Taylor Hoffman and I was also honored for All State Choir. My name is Rebecca Stone and I was selected for the All State Band.
Mr. Umthun and I helped with their recording process. This year was a very unique endeavor as they sought out to learn all of our technique, scales, solos, excerpts, and then record them, submit them. A lot of time went into preparation, practice. Some of them have made All State for the second time. So this is a huge achievement even with the odd year we're having. I'm very proud of all of them that they stuck with it and continue to represent Marshalltown in the All State Ensembles.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations. And we also have tonight Mr. Nate McCully. He is from Marshalltown, a travel company, and he is here to present a donation of tools or four tools for a high school construction program. Nate and Raul.
Want to give them the microphone?
My name is Nate McCully. I'm with the Marshalltown Company and I've been working with Raul to help outfit his program with some tools. And our company would like to make this donation to him to help support his class. And we're just grateful for these types of programs in our community and glad that we can help be a part of it.
Yeah, my name is Raul Revolo and I'm at the MHS doing the construction tech there. And yeah, Nate and I have been discussing our plan, are looking forward into where we want to be. And the tools that we have come up with have really, will really impact our program in a way that we can now do things, learn skills for the student, have the students learn skills that will really take them a long ways and find a career if they choose to go into that field right out of high school. So it's going to be great and I really appreciate it.
We thank you for enriching our curriculum. Thank you so much.
Gotcha. Just wanted to make sure. Oh, well. We better not say that.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of November 16th? Are there any items of note and personnel? Looking at inter-agency agreements, we have memorandum of understanding with Mid-Iowa Community Action to provide an after-school program for K through 4 grade students at all elementaries. We have an MOA with MICA also for the implementations of the elements outlined in the Full Service Community Schools grant. We have a data sharing agreement with MICA. We have a scheduled service agreement with TRAIN for preventive maintenance of district We have an agreement with UNI Center for Violence Prevention to participate in a new initiative to raise awareness around bullying and gender violence. We have nine special education students out and one gen ed student. Are there any questions on those? We have two open enrollments in. Are there any items of note in bills? We have the donation from Marshalltown Company as you've just seen. We have a donation in the amount of $576.78 from an anonymous fund on the community foundation of Marshall County to go towards playground equipment at Hoagland Elementary. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Miller McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Did you get that?
Yep.
Anybody on the pink sheet?
No.
Nope. Okay. Gosh, Dr. Schudy, we're already over to you.
Yeah, so our first topic is COVID-19 school dashboards. So I just wanted to share a couple of things with you quickly relative to our submissions of data to different entities. As you know, we report out every week at the end of the week, the number of confirmed cases amongst our students and amongst our employees and total numbers. We've also been participating in a national dashboard back in July when we had to submit our return to learn plans. The state had made the decision that they weren't going to involve themselves in any school district data collecting related to COVID. I'm not quite sure why, but in lieu of that, we decided to participate in a national data collection that was through a partnership with the National Superintendent's Association and Brown University. I think it's the only national COVID school-related data collection going on. And then just around Thanksgiving, the Department of Education did decide they wanted to start collecting data voluntarily from school districts. So first, the first document there, the Iowa DE COVID data, and I apologize on the quality of this, it wasn't easy to copy from the DE website, but basically what the Department of Ed is asking us to submit voluntarily are both the number of confirmed cases of positivity amongst students as well as staff. And then they are also interested in the number of students and staff that are needing to be quarantined. So the first submission, which was 1122, those are big numbers because basically they wanted all the numbers from the beginning of the school year until that first collection point. But then after that, the numbers have been weekly. So similar to we report out on Friday of every week, the past week's positives, on Monday, generally Monday or Tuesday at the latest, I submit to the DE both the number of positive cases as well as the number of quarantines. I'm not sure if, and then there's, they also ask in general for a handful of the mitigation strategies, wanting to know whether we are or are not implementing them. I'm not sure if the DE is going to provide, you know, statewide data or districts' data down the road. I actually threw out that question to them and haven't received a response yet on that. But I just wanted you to be aware that we are reporting that voluntarily to the state. And then the other document, which is a little bit more informational, I think, this is the national data collection and this is simply the page on our district, which is inaccessible to the public. They have a public side where you can see just national data in aggregate. And then they have a special link for where the districts that are submitting data can view. And again, they're working on improvements and refinements. They've been doing this, this data collection is every two weeks. So every time we submit data, it's over a two-week period. And we didn't, we weren't prepared to submit on the first three submissions at the early stages of the school year, but have been submitting since October. And as you can see from the graphics, to no surprise, you know, the staff situation is much more dire than the students' as it's related to having contracted the virus. And all they are interested in is the number of people that have tested positive. So that first chart there represents our staff and our student trajectories as it relates to the community transmission rates that they pull at the federal level. For the most part, and you can see down below, when we're compared to similar districts in terms of we would be classified as rural district in that first chart, or if we're looking at similarly sized districts, our trajectories run relatively true to what they're seeing they should be with the transmission rate in the community. Our adults, you know, in that second chart, infection rates in my school size, the adults run almost true with the community transmission rate. Students, for the most part, with the exception of that one submission, have run below that. So the good news is our students are running considerably below that. And I would anticipate would continue to do so. However, you know, it is concerning that our employees continue to run higher than what would be projected based on the community transmission rate. That being said, I still feel fairly confident that their infections aren't, we have little to no evidence that those infections are occurring at school with very few exceptions where we know that, as I've stated before, we've had some situations where people ate lunch together unmasked in confined space. And then there was belief that there was some transmission there. We had transmission within our volleyball team towards the end of the year. Those are about the only two incidences of the many incidences that we've had. For the most part, like we hear everyone else saying, it appears that most of the positive contacts and/or acquisition of the virus is occurring outside of school for the most part. Down below, they have more mitigation strategies that they asked about. And without going into detail on that, I would just share that there was a recent survey done this fall by Education Week in which they listed out 29 different mitigation strategies. And going through that list, the Marshalltown Community School District is actually implementing 23 of the 29, which I think is having a lot to do with the success that we've had and not having a lot of spread internally and not being forced more than we have into a virtual type situation. The six things that we are not doing that are listed are COVID testing students at school, COVID testing staff at school. You're not able to accommodate six-foot social distancing, riding school buses. We go by the three-foot standard, just as we do in the classroom, knowing that we're requiring masks. And the other two items were providing outdoor and, you know, giving instruction outdoor instead of indoors and staggering students' arrival and departure times. I would say though, we're kind of sort of doing that and that we have in many of the buildings identified different doors for which different groups of students come in so they're not all coming in the same entry or going out the same exit. So that, you could almost probably say we're doing 24 of the 29 mitigation strategies. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we are participating in both of those data collections in addition to reporting out to our local community. And as the data becomes richer and more can be interpreted from that, I will share that with the board down the road.
Are there any questions for Dr. Schudy?
Where is this dashboard at?
Would you, Mica?
Pardon?
Where is the dashboard located?
The, I'm trying to think. There is a link for the public dashboard. You won't be able to get to our district-specific data, but I can send that to you. It's, I think it's called something like the National COVID-19 Dashboard, but it's, I think you can also access it through the AASA website, which is the National Superintendent's Association. But I'll make a point of sending that to you.
Please, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Dr. Stevenson?
I have the first couple of slides to share with you and then I'm going to turn it over to our middle school and high school staff. A few board meetings ago, we had a six-week update that we gave you about our return to learn planning. So here we are back for a 12-week update and sharing information with you tonight to help you so that when we have our meeting on the 21st, the board can hopefully be able to act on that recommendation from Dr. Schudy about our return to learn model for second semester, which begins January 26th. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you a little bit of background. After the last board meeting, started thinking about a timeline. If you could open that up, Amy, please. I just wanted to let you know that we have been, sorry. It's a hyperlink? The board should know that we backmapped from Tuesday, January 26th, when second semester officially begins, with the goal that between January 4th and the 22nd, that our administrators, teachers, programs, transportation, and food service would be able to act upon whatever the board's recommendation is on the 21st. So on the 21st, we'll bring updated numbers to you. And then tonight, we're bringing you 12-week numbers from November 20th to the 30th. There was an open Google form that was sent via Infinite Campus to every parent in the system to respond about what they wanted for their child's learning environment, whether they were pre-K6 or 712, if they were currently virtual or currently the district model, which was in-person. Thanks, Amy. There it is. And back to the slideshow, I have the next two slides too. And I don't know how to do this, but I can't read and my glasses are fogging up. So I'm sorry. My mask is down momentarily. So in the next slide, you'll see the pre-K6 results and then the following slide is 712. So remember, this was data that closed on November 30th. And at that time, we had roughly 190 students who wanted to change from the in-person model of coming to school every day as a pre-K6 student to virtual, to having a virtual teacher support them. And then on the reverse, we had 99 students who wanted to leave virtual education, which had been a genuity first semester, to go to in-person learning. I do want you to know that when this data closed on the 30th, around 58% to 60% of our families had completed the survey. Ideally, we'd want 100, but we really knew we still had a lot of work to do. So principals dug in and worked with their building secretaries to make lots of phone calls to our families that had not yet completed the survey and took that information and updated parents' requests. And I'm happy to say there was a lot of change actually at the elementary. I just was able to pull information today, a week later, and that 190 numbers you see there has actually gone down to 97. So that's a big, a big change and we're happy to see that. And then also, we had, instead of 99 students who want to go to in-person, we have 158. So it's, it's quite a difference. And I wanted you to have that information to think about prior to us coming back on the 21st. We're still at around 75% of parents that have responded. So obviously that can go up or down a little bit more and we'll keep watching that and making phone calls. And the survey is officially closed, but parents can call into the school and secretaries help them. Did you have a question?
I did. Do you have a benchmark or requirement that if a student or a parent wants to move a student from in-person to virtual, that they have to have, have a level of performance that would say, if you're not doing well, we're not letting you do virtual because we know it's going to be harder? Do we do that at all?
So that's a really great point. We also are concerned with students who were in virtual and were getting Ds and Fs or not engaging and their families continuing to want that environment for them. We do know that we, per the governor, have to give kids an option in this, in this pandemic to stay home if they want to stay home. But I would say that our, either virtual teachers, principals, or in some cases, secretaries and counselors, our special education instructors are reaching out to families and trying to guide them to the decision that we think is in the best interest of the child academically. But no, Mike, there's no like hard or fast. If you didn't get it right first semester, you can't come back. We're just...
We don't have the authority to say, no, you can't do that.
Right. We're trying to get them to understand that yes, we're tracking attendance. Yes, you can still be truant if you're not engaging. Yes, you could fail and that might mean you don't get to go on to the next grade. Those are pretty serious conversations to have with families. So I hope that that has an impact on the, on the final result. And lastly, I'm trying to stick to my three, four minutes to honor the principals that are here too. The 712 survey that you see up there, there's been not as much change at the 712 level. I don't know what, if that's just the kids know what they want and they've told their parents, or maybe there hasn't been quite as much outreach at middle or high school yet because they were working through all the same numbers as the elementary, but times a lot more kids. But currently, that number of 162 has gone down to 156, so just a hair, six students. And then the number of those who want to come out of virtual has gone from 100 to 95. So not as much change in the 712 group. They are pretty comfortable with their hybrid option and pretty comfortable with their virtual option, is what I take away from that.
Is it interesting to note that in both PK to 6 and 7 to 12, that we are reducing the number of in-person learners? People who are in-person, more of them want to go to virtual, but the virtual people, more of them want to come back to in-person? Why would?
Yeah.
It's like exactly the opposite decision that parents are making.
Right. And to add quirkiness, this whole situation, we went into remote, required remote continuous learning when we sent the survey out. So what parents were learning and experiencing for 10 days, which our kids did really great with and our families, that isn't what they were, that isn't what you're committing to for second semester. You're committing to what you had September, October, and November up until closure. So I know middle school is probably going to mention that too, but we're trying to do some parent education too about, you're not committing to learning in the way that you did prior to Thanksgiving. You're committing to learning in the two choices you had that were presented to you in August. So yeah, it's been, it's been interesting. And it was actually a dead heat at 4 o'clock today. 253 changed their mind one way, 253 the other way. So, and we're still a long way out with the virus. I don't think we know, you know, what impact Thanksgiving and the holidays are going to have.
I think that's been one of the interesting dynamics of all of this despite our efforts to try to educate parents so that they can make the best decision possible. We believe many of them, when they chose virtual this summer, were thinking it was going to be more like what we offered voluntarily last spring. And as Lisa mentioned, you know, families that chose virtual know what virtual is now. But since we sent the survey out during a time that we had pivoted into continuous required remote learning, it may have lent some confusion as to that synchronous experience compared to the asynchronous experience of virtual learning really is. You know, the, the teachers that are assigned to that are more like guides by the side and tutors, but the students and/or their parents have to be self-driven to do what needs to be done in that asynchronous model. The other thing that I would say is that to your earlier question, Mike, is I truly believe that many of these parents are just set on a particular way of learning regardless of what we offer. And by trying to be more forceful, we could lose the students entirely through the homeschooling or something like that as well. So I think, but we've had some serious conversations, especially at the secondary level, about needing to be more purposeful and forcible about the fact that if students aren't doing what they need to be doing and if parents aren't helping assist them in doing so, then we're going to have to have some serious conversations about the need to attend summer school in order to be promoted or to give consideration potentially to retention in summer. order to be promoted, or to give consideration potentially to retention in some cases. There's going to be some difficult discussions that are going to need to be had if, for some of our kids and families, things don't turn around for the better.
Do you want to give them the mobile mic? You can take it out.
But this is more fun. I guess Dave and I kind of thought we would hope that you had a chance to kind of look at the data and really wanted to open up the opportunity to just see if you guys had specific questions. I mean, there's not much more than we can share than what's up there. What was that?
We can read it.
Yeah.
Please don't.
We know last time we talked for a long time, so we wanted to provide that opportunity to, you know, if you had some questions, you know, looking at our achievement, you know, we're working really hard on those kids. And this isn't a really great picture, because you can have some kids that are perfectionists, and so their completion rate is down, but they have an A, and you can have some kids that are moving through things really quickly, and so they look like they're completing a lot, but their grades are showing that. And so it's a hard... It's not as cut and dry as maybe an in-class A, B, C, D. But we're excited this week. We are starting some tutoring sessions for our virtual students. We have bus routes for pickups. We have snacks provided, and they'll be coming in for our third block. And then this Saturday will be our first Saturday school from 8:30 to 11:00. For our virtual kids, we are providing breakfast. We have 21 bus stops, so there's plenty of opportunity for kids to come in and get some extra help, and we have some really great teachers that are there to help them. So outside of everything else we've done, this is kind of our next layer of support, but we're open to just any questions you have, maybe on our virtual learners, right now.
I think that extra support, that Saturday thing, is like, super great. I mean, kudos to you guys for organizing it, and kudos to the teachers who are, you know, willing to go through an extra day of, you know, of it all. So I think that's great.
And we actually had really good volunteers for that, so that's exciting.
So how is the tutoring working?
Like, what do you mean?
How is it set up? When you said third block...
I mean, it's basically just you come in, there'll be different teachers, so if you need math, there'll be a math teacher. If there's this, you need this. It's really just kind of extra one-on-one attention.
It's during the school day, or...
The Tuesday, Thursday is during the school day. Yep, it's our third block of the day in the library.
I don't know what you mean by block, is what I'm asking.
12:30 to 2:00.
Yeah, it's 12:30 to 2:00.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Do you want to go to the next slide? Hybrid, please.
Sure.
It's kind of heavy.
Again, I mean, the data, essentially, it speaks for itself. Is it where we want it to be? No. I mean, our 18% failure rate at this point into the year is certainly not where we want it to be. But I would say that if you look back historically, it's probably in a little better position than it has been over the past several years. So I mean, I feel like we're 45% of our students who are learning in the hybrid right now having an A, I think is a real testament to the work that they're putting in and the work that the teachers are doing to meet their needs. Certainly, we won't be happy until all of that is shifting towards the top end of that schedule rather than where it is right now, but we're going to continue to work for them. You know, depending upon what kind of interest we have from some of our virtual learners coming in for support, we might be able to offer some of that opportunity on a Saturday for some of those kids who are actually learning onsite, too. If we can just continue to grow that program and it just becomes part of what we do, we would love to be able to continue to do that. I think one of the things that we're talking about with that 18% is we're going to take some of the features and some of the things that we've really learned about and liked with ed mentum and apply that to some of those students. So in other words, if I'm a student who doesn't pass a course, one of my core classes first semester, we're going to enroll them in a credit recovery ed mentum-type course where they're going to hit those priority standards and say, if you want to avoid summer school or advance to the next grade, this is an opportunity for you to re-earn or demonstrate that you have mastered these standards that we guarantee everybody's going to master through those priority standards. And they will do that concurrently, so, you know, as second semester starts, they may get an ed mentum course as well. It's not the full course, but it would be a course that centered on those priority standards. That's one of the things that we're doing for our in-person learners.
Questions from the board?
I like the way you laid out the data. It was easy to understand.
Thanks.
And then, I guess, one other thing that we did mention really quick, just so you kind of know. We've had some kids come out of virtual since the beginning of the school year. We've had 25 7th graders come out of virtual and back into district plan, and we've had 11 8th graders come back in. Some were requested, like, come on back, and some it was their choice. So we have kind of made that transition for some of those kids that have really needed to come back. We've allowed them to come back and start. A good handful of special ed students, we requested them to come back for that additional support. So, but yeah, any other questions for us, we'd be glad to answer.
No, it sounds like you're offering support, and I like the idea of the credit recovery, where they can do it concurrently. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All the microphones over here.
It's important to understand that the percentages that are represented here, sorry, the percentages that are represented here are individual courses, not individual students. Okay? So on the top part, that is individual students by course, and you can see that there's a large percentage of students that are over 50% done in their courses, like 56%. But then how is it that there's 53% of the courses that are earning an A? And so kids are flying through curriculum and not mastering the material. She heard Dr. Shudy talking about, they have this asynchronous learning, they're checking in with the teacher, teacher's checking in with them. The teacher opens things back up to them or helps them to review something so they can take a test over, but they're just sort of like plowing through some of the activities. A strategy that some of the teachers have adopted is to close down and require that they have to do this one before they do that one, before they do this one, so they were popping around. And so that's part of the learning that teachers had to go through, too, as we work with the students. So this has been hard to look at for us, and so you can see over there on the right side, the number of students, over 100 students that we have pulled back in to try and salvage whatever credits we can with them. So they come into our peer program. Most of the work that they're doing is in a packet form, it's on paper. By the end of the first quarter, they couldn't go back into a regular classroom, because what is the teacher supposed to do with a student who comes up with a zero? The odds were going to be really bad for them to pass that class. So we're doing some priority standards and work with that and focus on those priority standards, district priority standards, to help the students earn three or four credits before the end of the quarter, the end of this quarter, and its semester. Any questions about this data? Because it's...
So they've got five weeks to rectify that?
They can, and then we have Saturday school again this coming Saturday, and we'll have another one in January. They're invited, any students are invited to come in on their days off into our academic support center and get additional support anytime during the school day. Just walk in the door, come on in. Some students take advantage of that.
I didn't know you offered that. I mean, that's a good thing.
The academic support center?
Yes.
Yeah, any student who's struggling, anytime, come on in. And like, and most of the students we've pulled back in, there have been a few parents who have said that they wanted us to do it. And we actually had one student who went back out to virtual with the parents' request because she wanted to have a handle on what he was supposed to be doing. He had permission to use the car and wasn't going to school, so she pulled him back. So on our hybrid students, next slide, please, Amy. Our attendance has been great. Our attendance was wonderful during required learning. This representation of grades is actually from the nine weeks because our grades were due Friday, as I was preparing for this. So I just checked them real quick before this meeting, and they're pretty, they've pretty much stayed the same. What'll happen again is we'll have a couple of Saturday schools, and kids will get caught up, will get closer to the end of the semester, and there'll be this mad dash to get to the end of the semester, and kids will pull grades up. The difference is, this semester compared to last year at this time, we had 22 courses that were being failed at the nine weeks last year at this time, so that is up from that, which, it doesn't surprise me, is still disappointing. Right? So the students reported the struggles with, I don't know what to do when I'm at home, and I don't know what to do at school. So that's changed. The teachers' courses were audited, and we shared with them what the students said, and they have now said, this is cycle number 12, date, you know, November 2nd to November or November 7th, and this is what you have to do at home, and this is what you have to do at school. And so just came out of UEN meeting, and that was shared. Someone asked that question, and there are other schools that figured out they've got to do the same thing to help students be very clear about what expectations are. So a lot of learning that we've done with Canvas, but Canvas has been a wonderful tool for us to use in the delivery of the district curriculum. And we've had some parents, as you've heard others say, who, Mike, you asked that question, can we force these kids to come into school? And there are some parents who came in before we went to required remote and said, I'm pulling my kid now, and they're not coming back till after winter break, because it's just kind of crazy out there. These numbers are crazy. So we have worked with those families and put them 100% on Canvas virtual, and it's less than 10 that we've done that with. But they seem to be getting by with the understanding that the teacher's not going to teach synchronously with you while they're teaching a class. That's very difficult to do, but it's your responsibility to communicate with the teacher. The teacher will get back to you, and if you do need to have a Google Meet, then they will set that up to support you as you're running through Canvas, through our curriculum and the courses or the activities that we design.
Other questions for Jackie?
Do you have the smart boards at the high school that can record the teacher's presentation?
Those went away, I don't know, about five or six years ago, but they have this thing called the HUE camera that we, I saw it at a conference once, and I started buying them for our teachers. And so they can use the HUE, so they can turn it in such a way that they can record while they're teaching a whole class. Or a lot of them, I know there's some teachers in particular who just do that during their planned time, they do a short lesson and post that to the Canvas.
Yeah. Okay, that's why, it's been quite a while that I used that, but I was...
It is a wonderful...
The instructors could put it right on Canvas, and it was so nice, because you could just look at it right there. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So as I said earlier, this was more just an information update. Tonight, we'll be back the 21st to give you some vital numbers and recommendations from Dr. Shudy and team to how we would like to offer learning to our students for second semester.
Want to move on to at-risk?
Yes, let's move on to at-risk. Tonight, you're also going to hear, for information only, an at-risk budget update. From me, that document with the numbers, Paulette's going to talk about that one, and I'm going to talk about the slideshow. And then we'll be back again on the 21st for action on that proposed budget. Okay, so for those of you that are new, and maybe those that need a reminder, on the board, every year around November, December, I come to you and talk about our K-12 at-risk programming. So students who are at risk, by definition, are maybe not likely to graduate, could potentially drop out. And so you'll see there the state definition in that second slide of who is defined by at-risk. Next slide, please. This slide actually is taken right from code and tells us what we can and cannot do with our at-risk budgets. It requires that we review and evaluate what we're doing for our at-risk students, which we do through our at-risk committee and our leadership team in principal meetings. We review how students are identified, we use the criteria the state gives us, and then we come up with ways, strategies, programs, assistance to help students in the many different ways that you can show a need for at-risk services. The next slide, as a review, talks about our visioning and future work. So just so you know, we do have a K-12 at-risk committee. It's a little bit smaller this year than it's been in years past, but it does have representation from each of the buildings, and it has representation of different roles within the building, so central office staff, teachers, counselors, et cetera. Eric Gosling generally runs those meetings and helps plan the agendas and the topics so that the at-risk committee can review data, review the budget, and see how our students are doing. And hopefully, that current programming hyperlink will work up there, but it is a reminder of what we're currently doing through at-risk dollars. So you'll see at our K-4 buildings, the social workers are funded through at-risk. We also have counselors, those are gen ed-funded. Bobcat University, most of you are familiar with, is a comprehensive summer school program. And then as you move down through Lenahan, Miller High School, and MLA, you'll see the people, and people are over 80% of our at-risk budget expenditures. So we do hire lots of people with our at-risk dollars to support students in many areas to address chronic absenteeism, lack of proficiency in reading or math, behavioral concerns, mental health concerns, and then potential, students with potential dropout factors in More specifically, you'll see there, there are five or six categories, and this is how the budget that Paulette's going to talk about is chunked out, and then the different buildings are wrapped into that. So we do have a credit. In section 1, we code costs related to creditor content recovery, and so that would be, you've heard us talk about ed mentum, that is the platform or tool we use for credits for our virtual learners, and then we use that regularly with our students at MLA, MHS, and even sometimes at Miller. We have a partnership with Net High to help individually with students who need help getting to graduation requirements. We have contracted services with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and also Center Associates. We have a para educator who helps at peer. We also, as you can see there, support portions of the salary of juvenile court liaisons that support our three secondary schools. The entire staff at Marshalltown Learning Academy, student support services, and these people you'll see are primarily focused on social-emotional needs. And then the last section there, you'll see academic interventionists, and those are staff members who are helping with reading and math primarily. And the very bottom category is IJAG. IJAG, I guess, is sort of a contracted service, right, Paulette? It would be, it would actually go up in part 1, sorry about that. We've expanded to four employees through the IJAG program, one at Miller, two at the high school, and a new employee at MLA this year. Generally, I get asked the question, so how are we doing? Are we, is our money making a difference? And so this is the baseline outcomes that we established five years ago. I mean, they might have been here before me, but they were the ones I started working on when I started working with this committee, and these are aligned with the goals that the state shares. And so what I do every year before I come to you is go in and say, hey, how did we do last year? And we share that out with our committee. So as you can see, I think we're doing pretty well. There's a couple areas that I marked in red because our data's going in the wrong direction. However, I would like to have like an asterisk there by the increased graduation rate, because even though our graduation rate went down slightly, it still was on an upward trajectory, if that makes sense. We're not moving years behind where we were, and we don't have our 1920 data yet, which I'm hopeful will put us back in the yellow or green. And we don't have our 1920 data yet, which I'm hopeful will put us back in the yellow or green. We've done a great job on the areas in green, decreasing our dropouts, improving behaviors, behavior incidents and office discipline referrals that relate or result in suspensions at times. Same with bullying and harassment. And then the one in gray, I just didn't even know what color to put it because we don't have state testing data because of COVID. Last spring, all of that was taken away from us. So we'll just not look at that. And then the other red area that is not, I feel like a broken record sometimes, is telling you all that we're not doing very well with chronic absenteeism. Though we do have a lot of students, and this was based on last year's data, who miss more than 10% of their school experiences. So that's where we are in terms of our outcomes based on our at-risk services and programming. That's a summary of what I just said about what we need to keep focusing on and keep digging in deeper to get better results with. Next slide, please. And the, towards the end here, what I've been putting in the last four years is kind of a vision of how can we continue to add services, continue to increase the budget to help us meet more needs? And so had we stayed on track financially, I would be asking you to expand our elementary social workers this year and potentially increase reading and math support at the high school in the peer program. However, due to those, I mean, increasing five people would be potentially over $400,000 to the at-risk budget. We are going to table those asks for 2021, 2122 because of the potential tax rate implications for our property taxes because we've had a decrease in certified enrollment. So those are not, I'm not asking, I won't be asking you on the 21st to approve a budget that is an increase of previous year's budget. So we will use the budget we have and continue with the services we've been offering. And the next slide is, do you have any questions? And as you know, this is all about the ABCs. So we're continually working on improving attendance, increasing positive behavior, which should in turn result in higher levels of classwork and proficiency. I'm going to turn the mic, not literally, but turn it over to Paulette. She's going to talk through the financials.
Amy, can you open the other attachment, please? All right, so the dropout prevention at-risk budget is calculated using our certified enrollment from each fall and our district cost per pupil. And it's a formula that applies to all school districts, except for different school districts have different maximums. The maximum modified supplemental amount that we could ask for in Marshalltown is 5%. That's the maximum any district can ask for. Many districts have a maximum of less than 5%. So we are at that 5% maximum. So we use those numbers to calculate what we are going to ask for. And remember that when we approve, when we ask you to approve this budget at the next meeting, what we are requesting is additional spending authority. We are not requesting cash from the state because this program is funded through local property taxes. So when we approve the budget, we are asking for the authority from the state to provide these services. And then we ask our local property taxpayers to, for the cash to support that authority. So we have not in the past been maximizing the entire budget because there is a property tax impact. And as we've talked through the last couple of meetings, there are a couple of other things that have potential to have some impact on our property tax rate for next year. And so we didn't want to increase the property tax rate for any of these services. So what we're trying to do here, this year, our supplemental amount for this programming is $1.37 per thousand. So what we are trying to do with this budget is keep it at an estimated $1.37 per thousand. Now, keep in mind, it's a challenge to do budgets at this time of the year when we don't know what supplemental state aid is for next year yet. We don't know what our taxable valuation increases, or, you know, hopefully not decreases, will be yet. So we're making a lot of assumptions in this proposal as every school district is because there are some unknowns yet. So if we walk through, you know, what, for fiscal '22, what the maximum budget that we could provide services under, we would be down, line seven, total maximum dropout prevention budget would be about $2.3 million. Last year, our maximum budget was $2,229,000. So with that, walking through the rest of that formula, that proposed tax rate, if we maxed out, or, you know, provided all the services that this budget would allow, that would put our tax rate at about $1.49. So there is room to increase services as we've been trying to do over the last couple of years. But again, it does have an impact on property tax rates. So that's why we are proposing for fiscal '22 to remain at that $1.37, which would be a requested modified supplemental amount of about $1.6 million. So we would have a total dropout prevention budget of $2,133,000. What, whereas our maximum budget would have been $2,315,000. We, this is total expenditure-wise, it's an increase of about $25,000, $30,000. And that is to cover the increases in salaries and benefits for the current staffing.
Questions for Paulette?
Why did we make the decision? I think I know, but I think we should talk about it. Why did we make the decision that you wanted to leave the tax rate the same as last year?
There are a couple of different things that are going to have an impact potentially on our property tax rate for next year. Number one is our special ed deficit. Our deficit increased significantly from last year. And that deficit is 100% funded through local property taxes. The other thing that's going to have a significant impact on next year is that the decline in, in student enrollment that we experienced this fall is going to put us on the budget guarantee again next year. And the budget guarantee is 100% financed by local property taxes. So those two things, and again, as I mentioned, the challenge of doing this budget before we've done any other budgets, because this has a property tax impact, it has to be done early so they can get this in the aid and levy process. So it makes it a little bit challenging. But we know we are going to have some other considerations budgetarily. So our recommendation is to not potentially increase taxes anymore.
Other questions?
I have a question regarding the numbers you were providing with this, Dr. Stevenson. It looks like we went down on behavioral issues or major issues by 25%. What are, what are some of the things that would have accounted for such a huge improvement from one year to the next?
To be transparent, those numbers were down. But again, they were based on us ending school in March. So kids didn't have any behavior incidents in April and May. So there's a very good chance we might have not been as down. You know, that's kind of everything is asterisk from last school year. But I would say in general, our numbers were trending in the right direction because of the work that's been happening at the individual school level and then also across the system to rebuild or revamp our positive behavior supports, our PBIS programs, as well as teaching and working through collaborative problem solving, which is a, is a program that we've been stair stepping up to so that as many teachers as possible can be trained in that so that they have better skills in those cases when students are showing challenging behaviors. Yeah, it's been, it's been a kind of a multi-pronged, I'd say, approach to addressing student behavior in each of the buildings.
And that actually, as long as he's bringing that up, I was wondering about, we talked, you talked about attendance not improving. Do we have data now for, could we compare attendance when we had school, when everybody's coming to school? School with the hybrid model and school with the, the virtual model? And see how these different models are working attendance-wise? Can we get that?
I'm sorry, you're asking if we compare behavior, I'm sorry, attendance in virtual?
Attendance on those three models, because we would have past years for when everyone's in school at the secondary level. But do we have, can we get attendance for hybrid and virtual? And make a comparison as to how that's working?
I feel like one of the principals shared that in their slides, didn't they?
Oh, they did last time. They said attendance was improving, that's why I'm asking.
Would you like updated information on that?
That would be good, because they did that six weeks ago, but I don't think anyone, did, did I miss it? I was looking for.
I want to say maybe Miller shared that their attendance was increased in the 12 weeks.
Okay, and that's what they said six weeks too, that their attendance was better and their behavior was down, behavior issues were down.
Remember that this is just information tonight and you'll be voting on the budget at the next meeting. So you still have a chance to ask more questions.
You know, all of these decisions, clearly, you could spend more money if you had more money on these sorts of issues. And, and administration has made the decision to not because they want to keep the tax rate down because of these other issues that Paulette talked about. Just, you know, it's probably, probably the right decision. It, it bears having a discussion at the board table, I think. This is not so much directed to you as to you two, on where that tax rate could go and what that means to the average property taxpayer. If we're making decisions today about that, should we have some visibility on where we're going so that we can make a good decision today? So, you know, Paulette, it's your, I guess, Theron's opinion that, well, we don't want to change the at-risk budget because that's going to raise the taxes more than what we think is reasonable. But I'm not sure the seven of us know that. And shouldn't we? Especially now that we're forced, we're going to make a decision two weeks from today about this particular budget. You know, if it's, was it 1835 this year? It's 1835 and, you know, it's, Mike, it's going to be 1950. And that's going to mean X to the average taxpayer.
A dollar amount.
Should we, should we try and, I know that there's a lot of assumptions. There's a lot of assumptions in this, right? And I feel like I'm sort of making a decision with half the data.
Well, well, and part of that is because we don't know, as Paulette mentioned, what the valuations are, which we usually find out shortly into the new year. We don't know what the state supplemental aid increase will be, which could be anytime from January to April, you know, depending on when the legislature decides that, hopefully closer to January. But what we do know is that we have way more authority to spend today than we do cash to back it up. And so it, it doesn't serve us any purpose to act like a bank and to bank all this spending authority that we can't spend when we don't have the cash in order to back it up. And the only way at this given time that we can increase the cash position is by raising taxes. And we know, or we have good reason to believe there's going to be a need for potentially a significant increase just to weather the storm of the declining enrollment and the special ed deficit this year. The last couple of years, we've had decreases in the special ed deficit, which provided us some latitude to ask for more in the at-risk budget without significantly impacting the tax rate. And so the hopes would be that we will be in a better position in the fall of 2021, when we have our new enrollment, which will hopefully recover similar to how it recovered after the tornado.
I appreciate everything you say, and everything you say makes sense. I get that. I just feel like with everything you say, we, feels like we should be able to take the leap to say, okay, everything I know today, 1835 is going to go to this. And this means this for the average taxpayer. And if you go to this, here's how you compare to your five districts above you and the five districts below you. And so, okay, board, do you want to do that? And if, well, you have no choice, we have to do that. But now we're making a decision about at-risk budget. Well, maybe we'd say, hey, okay, I get it. And I still want to spend more for at-risk budget and, and help kids that are at risk. But we don't have the data to be able to make that decision today, do we? Because you guys have said, we think it should be 1.37, just like last year.
I think.
Maybe it should be 1.49.
Yeah, part of the awkwardness of that is that just the timing of how this all works with when we have to approve the at-risk budget prior to knowing the answers to some of those other questions. And that's unfortunately just the way it is. So, you know, back when we would have some of those answers a year and a half in advance, like the SSA, it was easier, you had one more piece of the puzzle in order to, you know, to, to be able to make safe decisions relative to that. But I will say that most of these discussions have occurred as it relates to the individual pieces of this through finance before it's come forward to the board. Special ed deficit being one, the.
Declining enrollment.
No, declining enrollment, yeah, and the budget guarantee being another that, you know, we've had some of those discussions leading up to this, which has kind of led us to believe that this might be a good year just to try to stay the course with what we have in place, do our best to fund with a minimal increase what we have in place and not be reducing in hopes that we're in a better position next year to continue forward with some of those positions that Lisa talked about.
And this was also the early retirement incentive is paid for by property taxes. So that was why the recommendation was to not offer that at the end of this year also.
It's, it's a, it feels very hard for me as an elected official that is supposed to make a decision about, we want a seven to make a decision about tax rate, to be able to very, to make that decision with all the data that you need to be able to make that decision.
It's very hard for us too.
Okay, I'll be listening to Theron and Paulette and, you know, I guess, I guess it'll be okay.
Yeah. It's hard to judge whether or not, for instance, you were talking about those five extra people we need. And it's hard to make a judgment on, okay, let's say if the median taxed and property tax valuation in Marshall County were 150,000. So then we take 150 times $1.49 and we get $223 and I subtract, you know, the 1.39 amount. For me, as a taxpayer, it might be worth that to make sure that we have the personnel we need to do the job that we need to do. But I don't, I'm kind of with Mike, it's hard for me to sit here and know.
And that's, and that's just the school portion of your property taxes.
Right, it's not the whole property tax. It's just, so how much am I raising somebody's property tax? And is it something that really needs to be done? needs to be done? And it's, it's a difficult, you're right, we don't have all the information we need.
And I don't disagree with that at all. It is very difficult to make decisions when you don't have all the information. And there have been years when we have had to approve our total certified budget, you know, which, if you remember, our general fund budget is about $65 million. We're talking about $2 million here. But there have been years when we've had to approve a certified budget and we still didn't know what the supplemental state aid increase was going to be. So yes, it is, it is very challenging to make decisions when there are so many assumptions that are being made.
I think, one thing too, that you don't see with this, and maybe, maybe we can share this next time, is the amount of progress we've made in the last five years. So I'd say maybe 30-plus percent of the stuff that was listed as an at-risk service was not in place five years ago. So we have grown the budget and we've grown our, our programming and I, believe me, I'm not one to back down if I feel like we need a service that we're not offering, but I feel good about our ability to address the majority of the needs of our at-risk students. Would I like us to have full-time social workers at the elementary? Yes. But I also know in my back of my mind, which maybe you all don't realize this, but our grant that we have for full-service community schools gives us support staff at three of our elementaries. Anson and Rogers have had ESSA dollars that have allowed them to, to purchase social workers. So we've, we've been able to patch those services in without taxing the taxpayer. Does that make sense? We're using grants and, and other things to get those same services. Are those going to be there forever? No. Like, that grant will expire in five years. So we're going to have to be able to figure out if that's something we, we think is valuable and we would like to contain and, or not contain, but continue. And then if so, what is, at what cost to the district? So it's, it's not like, oh, shoot, if we don't get that this year, we're going to be just really sitting in a bad position. But we really greatly expanded our summer school programming. We've doubled, tripled our IJAG services, like, we, we have managed to do many things to support our at-risk students in the last three to four years. And so if this year, knowing that we're down students, we don't know what our SSA is going to be, we don't increase the budget and we, I'm sorry, we don't increase our programming levels, it's, I think we're still going to be okay.
Thank you.
Am I done?
Yeah.
Yes.
Seems like it's been a while, welcome back.
So, there's not a lot going on at the high school, obviously. So, yeah, due to COVID and everything happening, we have smaller events like this with the gingerbread house making contest, just to bring a little, you know, joy in the holiday season and these scary times. The contest will be held on December 5th, 14th, at one for both the blue and the red group, and the winning houses will be displayed and awarded prizes.
So with sports and stuff, there has been a couple cancellations and some have been postponed. So these are like the current sports right now are wrestling, basketball, and then on the next slide, it's going to be the bowling and the boys swim. And then if you go one more slide, so the, like, the big thing is making sure that everybody stays safe while viewing and playing these sports. So as it has been, each athlete gets two tickets to give out to, like, their parents or whoever wants to come watch the game. The only downside with this is they're not including the cheerleaders and the dance team with this. So like, I've been informed by some of my friends on the dance team, they're not very happy with this because they're not going to get, like, a senior night. So, and they're not going to get their parents to be there to watch their last dance performances or any of that sort of stuff. So that's kind of been the biggest, like, issue with this, is just how they feel kind of left out because it's like, it's their senior year, these are their last kind of performances and their parents are not going to be able to watch them. Do you guys have any questions about this or just school?
No, thank you very much.
Senator Adler and Representative Cahill, if you could come forward, welcome. So as Jeff knows, annually, we invite for our local legislators to come to the board to talk about your hopes and dreams for the upcoming legislative session or what the waters are looking like, and for us to share with you our legislative priorities, which hopefully you've had a time to look at, both the Marsh Town priorities that we had established early this fall in conjunction with submitting to the Iowa Association of School Boards, and I've also provided the School Board Association, the School Administrators Association, and the UEN, which are the largest 25 districts in the state, approximately.
Thank you for that information.
Turn it over to you to share your insights.
All right, the Strahids are go first, yes.
As you know, it's still early, we don't have the, the December RAC numbers out yet, so really giving a number or a percentage of any sort would be extremely premature. The last time we've seen this type of an economic hit was back in the, the decline from 2008 to 2009. I will say, I'm very proud of the budgeting that we've done in the past because we were able to deliver our promise to our school districts through the COVID epidemic. And we will continue to budget in a fashion that is responsible. We aren't going to tell you we're going to give an arbitrary number and then not deliver. And I think I have proved over and over again, the four years we've been there, that that was a key priority and getting the numbers set in a timely manner. Even though we don't have the two-year projection like it used to be, you know, in some cases that was actually a bigger hindrance than it was a positive because it gave a false sense of security, especially in a year like this year. So I think just providing an accurate, responsible number and actually delivering that number has been huge. I would like to go and kind of list through a few of the items that we have delivered on, if that's okay, over the first four years that I've been in the Senate. You know, we provided greater flexibility to the Department of Ed and allowing more options for students to obtain high school equivalency, diplomas. We gave school districts in Iowa statutory home rule. We established requirements for computer science and education standards, ensuring that we could get our children ready for the 21st century and the skills they needed. We restricted third-party use of student data, protecting their privacy. We worked with school districts to establish emergency operations plans, whether it be natural disasters, active shooter situations. We introduced statewide standards to adopt and require annual evidence-based suicide training prevention, or suicide awareness, suicide prevention, and also training on identifying ACES to help those kids. Created the seal of buyer literacy to recognize students who demonstrate proficiency in two or more world languages. We expanded the online learning for students, which turned out to be a rather useful tool. Address the inequities of the school funding formula, providing both funds for transportation equity and district cost per pupil. Extended operational sharing through the 2024-2025 school year. We increased the weighting to the students enrolled in concurrent enrollment courses. We extended secured and act, advanced vision for education, or SAVE, to help you in your bonding processes and to provide a sustainable funding mechanism. We provided sustainable funding increases for K-12 since I've been in office, nearly 300 million new dollars that were delivered on every time. We ensured children with dyslexia received the resources they needed and the certain teachers be certified to teach those for their needs. We gave Iowa teachers the tools they needed to ensure their classrooms would be safe and to provide a productive environment. We also ensured that students have access to the mental health resources they need by allowing telehealth in the schools, which, once again, during the COVID epidemic proves to be quite a good opportunity. And we eliminated barriers for students wishing to enter teaching as a profession by eliminating the requirements for praxis. These are just a few of the things I wanted to highlight, many of them I've spoken in the past, spoke with Superintendent Shutey about as we were moving on, and this is just to name a few, but I'll quit talking now and I'll answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Shutey, you want to?
Sure, I will. I come not nearly as prepared as Senator Adler, as I'm entering into this adventure to look at how we can provide the best services for our students, for our staff, for the, for our community. You know, I look at it as we have to be able to meet the needs of our students because these are our creators, our innovators, they are our doctors, our lawyers, our mechanics, our workers, our electricians, our cosmetologists, our nurses, our students are our future. And so we, this is a huge economic issue as well as a, you know, we look here, we're talking about the students in the K-12 seats or the pre-K-12 seats, but all of our education really is involved in our economy. And it prepares us to have that economy, to be strong for the future. So it is such a priority and I'm just getting my feet wet into it, I will admit to that. I am at that point of listening to those. I appreciated the legislative standards or priorities that, that you had outlined and many of those are, are firm beliefs that I have as well, through my work with ICA and through my work in the school system for 23 years and seeing students who come in and knowing students need access to mental health services in the school, we, we have got to have increased services for that and for their families, knowing that we have, that families and students need that opportunity to, to grow and to be able to not have to juggle two or three jobs while their, their ones are little, while they have little ones at home. We need to make sure that they have access to a strong system of support that we can provide all the way up through our college and career readiness to where we can put students out there, whether they're ready for a college career, whether they're ready for a, to enter the service or to enter into an, a internship or an apprenticeship or some other sort of work that will lead them on to be strong citizens in our community. Again, I, I have to admit, as I said, I'm new at this, and so I will, will continue to look at those details, but those are key issues that are very important to me and that I will work toward so that, again, I believe that if we want it to be better for one student, any of the students here, we have to make it better for all students. So education's a top priority for me.
I appreciate the list of things that Senator Adler had mentioned, and I think that all of us recognize that the coming year is going to be very challenging economically and because of what's all happened, we were extraordinarily thankful for the legislature being able to uphold their promise of the SSA for last year, given the COVID situation. I think because of knowing how challenging it's going to be, the focus of all of these groups as their number one priority is continuing to take a look at not so much SSA as just the whole funding formula and the equity piece as it relates to not only transportation equity and per pupil equity, but like in Marshall Town, low socioeconomic, and how do we provide equity there, knowing that it costs more to educate students or second language learners, which the state has historically funded for four and five year, I think it expanded actually from three to five years, and we know based on the research that it takes about eight years for a second language learner to. So that's another example where we can continue to access funds, but it impacts our local property tax rate beyond that five years to do so. So the challenging thing for our district is we're a bit of an anomaly in the state of Iowa in that we're the third highest in total number of students and third highest in population density of second language learners. So for the most part, the communities that have the fortune of having meatpacking within them tend to have the highest numbers in the state, you know, second language learners. So that's something that's very much of interest. I would add to that, you know, one caveat that we've learned through COVID, I believe, if we didn't know it already, was how internet connectivity has almost become another one of Maslow's first-order basic needs, along with shelter and food and water and clothes. You know, it's critically important for communication purposes, informational and learning purposes, and as we found, to be able to do things safely that maybe otherwise wouldn't be so safe, whether it's ordering from a store or what have. And so, you know, we've worked really hard in trying to maximize our use of CARES dollars in order to provide both the necessary devices and the connectivity to our families so that we could successfully engage in either hybrid or online or, you know, required remote learning where necessary, but it's not sustainable for us to continue to do that likely beyond the 2020, 2021 school year. So I don't personally know if that's more of an issue for the federal government or in conjunction with the state government, but obviously for many, many years, we've talked in the state of Iowa about the need of providing high-quality broadband internet in an affordable and accessible way to the whole state, which hopefully this will ramp up that conversation even more. Mental health obviously continues to be a high priority and there have been, as you mentioned, some good strides in that way. COVID is just going to further amplify what we have known to be out there and, and probably with the economic challenges that students' families are going to be facing, the needs could become significantly higher in addition to just the isolation that's been caused by COVID. And I would, I would say the two other things on this comprehensive list that I gave you that are, in my mind, of key importance would be this idea of COVID-19 remediation in terms of is there a possibility of some one-time funding that could help us further enhance what we otherwise would be trying to do over the summer to catch kids up that are behind, whether that be from last spring where they missed, you know, basically nine weeks or one-fourth of the school year, or through the interrupted learning processes as we've engaged in school this year with having to pivot one way or another. And then the other thing is just the teacher shortage. I mean, we were, in many, many areas, there was a teacher shortage pre-COVID and there certainly was a substitute. There has been a significant substitute shortage ever since, I would say, teacher quality and, or teacher leadership and compensation got enacted because many people who were subs, high-quality substitutes got hired in lieu of teachers that were within our workforce moving into those leadership positions. So during this period of time, for whatever reasons, and I'm sure there's multitude of them, you know, teaching hasn't been maybe a profession that a lot of people have aspired to go into for one reason or another, some of it may be related to what we're going to be talking with Jamie Volmer about later tonight, but. tonight, but any efforts that can help entice, solicit, recruit people to give serious consideration to what I believe is one of the most important professions in our country would be greatly appreciated.
I agree, and I certainly will take those into consideration and do what I can as far as working and working together. I think that's one of the things that I wanted to state, that I want to work with Jeff and I want to work to find the best solutions. We know we can't all have everything we want, but we can find some solutions that are workable for us all and come up with some strides that are win-wins for everyone, especially our students.
One thing I'd like to, you done?
Yeah.
Okay, one thing I'd like to seek your input on, that I've talked with a number of superintendents in the last couple of weeks, is dealing with the substitute requirement rollback under the proclamation. Are you seeing that that has been beneficial for Marshalltown Community Schools? I'm getting a number.
Talking about the IFRS?
No, as far as certification, where they don't have to have the substitute certification that was rolled back.
I'll delegate that to our Director of Human Resources, Dr. Nora Ryan.
Yes, we have noticed an uptick in substitute teachers applying and going through the sub-off course who do not have a four-year degree. So prior, it was the four-year degree needed to take that. Now it's 60 credits or usually a two-year degree. That has definitely brought in some applicants still. It's, you know, not sufficient for our needs, but there's also mixed feelings from parents in the district about that, about having someone less, with less academic training in that profession. But, you know, black and white dancer, yes, we have seen an increase in substitute applications. We just wish it were about 10 times what we had.
Thank you.
Well, and I had mentioned, you know, the governor had lifted some IFRS restrictions in order to allow for recently retired teachers to come back into the fold sooner and not be penalized through their IFRS. I believe all of that expires here in December unless, and really that's something at a bare minimum, we need to continue through the end of the school year while we're still grappling with COVID. And so I would hope that could be extended.
I do know, and I haven't checked into it in the last couple of years, for a while there, when teachers came in from out of state trying to get an Iowa license was very difficult because it seemed like our BOEE was disorganized. You'd send in your transcripts and they'd lose them or they would, you couldn't get back an honest answer, what courses do I need to take to get a license? And so I think to making sure that our licensure and endorsement requirements are clear and transparent, that would help, I think, to get with a teacher shortage and maybe having some alternate ways of getting that licensure if the teachers are qualified out of state, figuring out how to get those equivalents. But I do want to thank you for what you've worked on as far as the behavior, clearing up some of the issues around behavior in the classroom. I know the legislature's worked on that and working with decoding dyslexia. That's a huge issue and I appreciate the work you've done there.
Thank you.
Other questions for our legislators?
I would just like to say again how much I've appreciated Senator Adler reaching out as he's mentioned, anytime, you know, he's got a question or something's being considered, he's been outstanding about reaching out to us and getting our opinion. We don't always agree, but we can agree to disagree and we're also super excited to have one of our own educators in the legislature as well. I think having people that have walked the walk and understand the challenges is always beneficial, so.
Can I ask, Sue, do you know which committees you're going to be on yet?
I do not yet.
You do not?
We've submitted that, but I do not have that yet.
Okay, and I do not either, which normally at this time I would know, but the only one that I do know is I will be chairing Human Resources in the Senate, so.
Well, good luck and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the opportunity.
And Mike, I feel your pain on that property tax stuff. From the city view, it's the same issue.
We move to Kevin.
Yes.
This is the change in the agenda that Dr. Schutte presented at the beginning. Good evening.
Good evening, B. Is this one on?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe. I'll just talk loud. How's that? So we are complete with the second phase of the three phases of design for the Anson and the high school air conditioning projects. If you had a chance to look at the packet, the really good news is we are still on budget and as a matter of fact, with the more detailed design, we seem to be in a better position at the high school. The cost estimate documents that we provided show where we were at back in October. The end of October, the high school project was at about 5.9, 5,941 total, everything kind of all in on that project. Because we had three alternates at that time, we eliminated one of them, we decided to give you more flexibility in making the decision on bid day because we never know what's going to happen on bid day. We pulled out all the work in the pool area as an alternate bid because it's a very independent system. It's really dehumidification. Ceiling and lighting is a part of that project as well and we have kind of an alternate 2A and 2B. So when you add that back in, we're actually about $100,000 less with the current estimate than we were back on October 27th. So that's good news. At Anson, we only have one alternate there, but we're much further along in the design there. As a matter of fact, we actually met with both principals today and talked about finishes for flooring and walls and base material. That project is up a little bit, about $29,000, not really very much at all, and we still do have the window replacement alternate identified for that project. So I am here tonight to ask for your approval of the design development phase and authorization to proceed with the construction document phase. If we get that authorization, our intent is to complete the construction documents and go out to bid in January, receive bids in February. The next action you'll take after that would really be adoptions of plans and specs and form of contract and then award of the contract. Hopefully the bids come in very well. So that's what we're here for and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have on either of those two projects.
Questions for Kevin?
For Nico's benefit, so what we're looking to do is to air condition the original high school building, which has never had air conditioning. With that would be some lighting retrofitting going to LED in some of those areas and taking care of some flooring needs. And then at Anson, currently there's about three different systems that are patched together to create the HVAC experience there and it's to completely replace that with a new HVAC system and to enclose the open classroom spaces, which have always been open since the building was built, and then to also give consideration to putting new windows in on the south side of the building.
Did I hear you say south side?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the design development and associated opinion of probable cost and authorization to proceed with the construction document phase?
So moved.
McGuinness Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Safe travels.
Okay, Amy, we got a string of them for you.
So it feels like just yesterday that I was here asking for these same things.
I think it was.
Yeah, I think it was. It's definitely every meeting that I asked for money, but as we've gone along, even last year, we asked in April to get your approval to go out for RFP, request for proposal to do our typical Chromebook replacement, so what we've annually budgeted for Chromebooks. And last year we did it in April and we got those devices within a week of school starting and school had been pushed back. So things were very backordered already due to the pandemic and we're not really in a better spot yet. So I wanted to make sure to get to you this proposal or this request to go out for proposal much in advance to give us the chance to get these devices in by school year 21, 22. So I'm a little early, I'm about four months early, but I did go ahead and put together what our typical replacement would be. And this is for second grade, for fifth grade and for 10th grade. So we haven't changed what we're asking for based on a replacement cycle that was created before I got here. Now, next year it'll change a little bit because you all very kindly allowed me to buy some extra devices last year, but for now we can stay the course and then number, the second proposal there is just requesting that we get a few more cases than we have in the past. So the top proposal is just saying, bare minimum, if we got what we needed, it would be the 1,180, but we'd also like to do what we have been able to do the last few years, which is buy cases for fifth grade, and now this is also asking cases for 10th grade. That would have been seventh grade, sorry. Now it's fifth grade because they're taking them home in Lenahan, sorry. So cases for fifth grade, cases for 10th grade, and then some new carts for those to be stored in pre-K through, those will go into the second grade rooms because we have four-year-old carts that are in those right now. So we just like to update those with the technology as they get quite a bit of wear and tear. So this one is just our annual request. So all I'm asking for is that we're allowed to go out and get those quotes from vendors.
Questions for Amy? May I have a motion to approve the RFP request for the annual Chromebook replacement as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Faltis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, this one is a little bit different. When I first got here in February, I went over some budgetary items with Paulette and at that point I was told about how we had switched over primarily to Chromebooks for teachers for all certified staff and we continued to have a tower PC, so a desktop computer in each classroom, and we had some budget to replace those tower PCs. Since I've been here, obviously a lot has changed and we've had a real need to be more flexible than that and be able to not only be more mobile and carry these around, but maybe even take them home. So as costs sort of level out with high-quality towers and laptops, I actually think it makes more sense to go with a laptop for our certified teachers that allows them the same capabilities that they have in their classrooms. It would change the classroom setup a little bit because you would then be asking them to plug into the projector rather than just have a stationary projector device, but then it would also allow them to keep their current Chromebook so they can have what the kids have and they can have something that has a little more capability to do things like Microsoft programs, to install applications that are beyond what an extension on a Chromebook can do. We have a lot of those cases in the high school and middle school. So we also see quite a few in the elementaries as well, things that they'd like to be able to do that they aren't able to do on the Chromebook. So we think it makes more sense rather than go with the tower PC to go with a laptop instead. So that's what this is about.
Questions for Amy?
I understand going to the laptop and I know for teachers who are teaming or your instructional coaches, it makes a lot of sense to be able to carry their computers. I'm not quite understanding why they would need a Chromebook with the laptop. That's not making a lot of sense to me.
Well, I don't know that I would suggest. At this point, I don't have any future recommendations for purchasing another Chromebook for the teachers, but there's not a reason at this point because they have high-quality devices right now for them to turn them in.
Okay.
So we'd allow them to keep their current device and then just buy them the PC laptop.
May I have a motion to approve the RFP to replace teacher workstations as presented?
So moved. Second.
Heitman Aguirre?
Other way.
Other way, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Why don't we take a break while you're setting up and then, five minutes? Okay, take a break and be back at five minutes to seven. We thank you for getting your $179 worth. That was a great way to end that book study. Of course, we expect you to do that with all of the money. You're up for school board committees.
I'll defer to you.
Oh, okay. Well, you do have in front of you a copy of the committee representatives and I believe that Gabby also included what the committees were so that you would have that information as well. Everyone is on four committees. Everyone received at least two of their requests and we're abusing Nico as a new member and he's on five committees. He's on MBEA. He's on MBEA, which he is already a member of anyway, so we'll let him represent the board at the same time. And Sean and I have a few more than four. As you read through those committees, please note that some, you'll find that some of your requests fell under, there were requests to be on the Frank Pierce Trust. And that by the will of Frank Pierce requires it to be the school board president. So there are other things that required certain things about them. So if you didn't get a committee you requested, there were lots of other people who requested that committee as well. May I have a motion to accept the board assignments for the 2020, 2021 school year?
So moved. Second.
Aguirre Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for the work you do beyond these meetings. Dr. Nora.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the request for approval for adding an additional staff member to the human resources team. And as I spoke about at the last board meeting, it would keep us more in line with similarly sized districts and would greatly, obviously, be appreciated in our office, given the workload and duties that we are responsible for. And as a team member of two who have HR duties, adding a third person would be, like I said, greatly appreciated.
Questions for Nora? May I have a motion to approve adding a staff member position to assist with the HR-related duties for all district employees as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller Hernandez, is that right? It was kind of a drawn-out one that I wasn't quite sure about. I was hoping you weren't ill or something. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to board policies.
The list of board policies looks a lot more imposing than it really is. So we'll try to move through this expediently. So as far as first readings, there were two policies that Sarah brought forward as part of the regular review process. Policy number 300, role of school district administration. And 301.1, which has been renumbered through 2.1, superintendent qualifications recruitment and appointment. Those two policies had amendments to them that you reviewed last meeting. And then I had brought forward three attendance policies. 501.3, attendance requirements. 503, 501.32, attendance regulations. 501.5, attendance center and program assignment. These were all amended in consultation with our district attorney to reflect our needs as it relates to online learning. And then Paulette had brought forward two new policies.
And just so I can do a motion to amend.
Okay.
Hang on to that.
All right.
May I have a motion to amend 300, 302.1, 501E3E1, 5013E2, 5015, and waive the second reading?
So moved. Second.
Aguirre Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carries seven zero. Now.
There were two new policies that Paulette brought forward as recommended by ISB. 705.2R1, suspension and debarment of vendors and contractors procedure. And 705.1R2, using federal funds in procurement contracts, procurement contracts. I would recommend adopting and waiving the second reading.
May I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Faltis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The motion carries seven zero. Sean?
Let's see, we'll start with 204.1. That will be, well, the most minor thing is it needs to be renumbered. But it recommended to be amended to comport with IASB model policy. And then also, we've added some language relating to electronic meetings.
Okay.
That one will come back.
All right.
204.2, recommend that it be marked as reviewed. It needs to be renumbered. And then we've taken the S off of special meetings in the policy title to make it special meeting.
Is there any objection to marking that as reviewed? Okay. Mark as reviewed. Dr. Shudi, we're back to you, 102.
Yeah, so as part of the recommended adjustments from IASB, we've got three policies that are being recommended, amended. 102, equal educational opportunity. This will also result in the recommendation to delete a former policy. There used to be two policies addressing this issue, one of which is in the 100s and one of which is in the 500s. So basically, we're incorporating what was in the 500 into the 100, covering both, having one less policy. 603.2, summer school instruction. There's some changes that were required by law. And then 603.3, special education. Again, updating it to reflect requirements as it relates to special ed law. All of these would come back as a first reading at the next meeting.
Are there any questions for Dr. Shudi at this time?
Then we have six policies that simply need to be, we'd recommend marking as reviewed. 102, 102.4, discrimination complaint form. 501.7, student transfers out or withdrawals. 504.2, student organizations. 505.6, early graduation. 603.10, global education. 603.11, citizenship. All of these changes were simply updating of the title or legal references.
Any objection to marking them as reviewed? Okay.
And lastly, would be policy 500 that we're recommending be deleted. Objective for equal educational opportunities for students. Again, what relates to students that differs from staff will be incorporated into the policy 102 that we talked about earlier.
May I have a motion to delete 500?
So moved. Second.
Heitman Aguirre. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Sodders, anything of note?
Yeah, so last week, I was able to have some really good conversations with three organizations regarding communications audit options. INSPIRA, the National School Public Relations Association. CISO, which is an organization based in Minnesota who also offer such audits. And then we also approached the CRAEA to see what their audit could potentially look like. So our conversations, in the conversations, three very different sounding processes came out of those conversations. So I have a proposal, official proposal in hand right now from CISO. I am awaiting the official paperwork from both INSPIRA and from the AEA. And I will anticipate having those by the end of the day tomorrow. And Dr. Shudi and I are going to take a look at what the proposals are in depth and set up any follow-up meetings that are necessary for those audits. But that's, that's a process we're, we're looking at doing in order to update the soon-to-be, soon-to-come-to-an-end communications and marketing plan that was developed two, two and a half years ago. And we have not had a communications audit, as we discussed in the last meeting, for 13 years. So I think it's high time we, we had one of those.
What am I doing? Is that it, Adam?
What's that?
Is that, are we?
On the committee report.
Ah, committee reports, okay.
Sorry.
So the LAU committee met back in October, and I think we may have missed the chance to hear what happened. So here's a chance. Jan, if you have something from the LAU committee?
I do. It was interesting. They went over the, the data, the growth data for English language learners. And as we've talked about, there's a lot of students who are not proficient or literate, fully literate in English after five years. And that was brought up when the legislature was here. So, but there are pockets of success. For instance, at Anson Elementary, where the dual-language students are enrolled and most of the EL students are being instructed in Spanish and English. Over half of the fourth graders showed the expected or accelerated rates of growth in reading and writing. And at Fisher Elementary, over 60% of the second graders showed expected or accelerated growth in the area of writing. So we do see these pockets where we're showing some success. Where's, the dual-language program has been in place long enough that we're able to see the acceleration at the secondary level that you expect to get with students who are biliterate. And so there are some things that are going well, but we still have a lot of students, about 79%, that are not fully literate in English at the end of five years. So we really do need to figure out what to do there. And because we have, and there's, it's very complicated because we have the dual-language students who are being instructed directly in both Spanish and English, including content. We also, because of the nature of the community we're in, we have a lot of students who speak Spanish most of the time when they're not in school. If they're not in class, speaking English in the classroom. And they're speaking Spanish because it's easier. I mean, it's in the hallways, it's in the lunchrooms. Over half the students speak Spanish. Anyplace you go in town, you can hear it. And so we're really going to have to make sure we're beefing up the exposure to English in the classrooms. And the teachers are working on that with their sheltered instruction. And then we also have about 40 languages in the school. Many of those, the students really are motivated to learn English because there aren't as many speakers of their languages outside the classroom. So it's complicated. It's not like one size, one, one approach we take is going to fit the needs of all of our students. And because there is so much that needs to be done, I really think this committee needs to meet more often. And I'd like to see us delve more deeply into the data we have. Both the qualitative data and if we see particular programs or particular buildings that are working, finding out exactly what they're doing. So I'd like to see the committee meet more often.
Karina, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to CYAC, I think it was Karina and Jan. Our own committee.
I think that was a good meeting. We had a big turnout. We went through the indicators, which we have worked on for the past year. Dr. Stevenson also shared some of the data, some of the from the community and families. And then we broke out into breakout sessions, which was nice to see some of the indicators and talk about what they feel like, sound like. What was that other one? Help me out. Feel, sound, and?
Feel like. I have my notes here. Look like, sound like, and feel like.
Yeah, look like, sound like, and feel like. So as a group, we were able to discuss with each indicator and what we felt about it, what it looked like, what it felt like. So it was nice to meet other people, talk about each indicator, especially indicators that we didn't particularly work with throughout the year. So we got a little, a different scope on that. I think we also talked about the fact that we want to be able to monitor something. What is it, the Life Ready? Is it Life Ready that we talked about? I think.
Anything to add, Jan?
No, I think, I mean, a lot of it was on communicate. We talked a lot about communication and.
Okay. MBEA. Dr. Shudi?
Yeah, MBA met last week. It was the first time we had been together since COVID, actually. And one of the things that I was able to share out at that meeting were the results of our local comprehensive needs assessment, which we had surveyed our local business and industries. And then they had compiled the data from not only Marshalltown, but the surrounding school districts as well. The highlights coming out of that was the need to increase the number of students that are considered concentrators, meaning they have at least two years' worth of coursework in one of the CTE areas. There's a big push to create student organizations that are tied to the CT area. So an example would be FFA and AG or Future Business Leaders of America in the business area. They really are wanting those types of social networks and clubs to be associated with all the CT areas in the state. Increase in work-based learning, work-based learning experiences in middle school programming, which I'm proud to say in Marsh Town, I think we're a leader in moving in that direction. With our modular tech lab, that's the envy of a lot of schools right now as far as CTE programming across the state. Also, a need for the teachers to have more explicit conversations with local business and industry to make sure that our programming is aligned with their needs. And a perfect example of that was like with Raul, having been working with Marshalltown Company, as we saw earlier, to talk about those types of things. And then Marsh Town Company helping support. Arrel didn't mention that right now, we're in the planning stages of Marsh Town Community College implementing a construction trades career academy for high school students, which will be a big part of starting next year. And then, no surprise, the, the need to recruit more people to go into the CTE fields to become teachers. The need to provide high-quality mentoring for new teachers in those areas, especially with the numbers of people that we have retiring in those fields. And then also the need to provide explicit, high-quality professional development that's relevant to the teachers in those particular programs. In addition to getting more kids in those career pathways, special attention needs to be made to special populations depending on the areas. So special education courses, special population that we need to be focused on. But also, you know, in family consumer science, getting more males into that program. Industrial arts, getting more females into that program. Making sure that we have equitable representation of students of color in those programs and that sort of thing. So shared out that. And then I think. And then I think, you know, the, the committee was very pleased to see that despite COVID, despite all the challenges, we've got a lot of great things moving forward with the Iowa STEM Best Grant, the implementation of two new curricular programs with the AG classes we've got going at the high school and the fire science offerings that, that we've got going as well. As I mentioned, MCC talked about the Construction Trades Academy that they're hoping to get off the ground, and then we also updated them a little bit on our career tree work, which has really taken off since Mark Purna keynotes.
Thank you. A reminder of a board work session on January 25th. Will we be here or in the conference room?
Conference room at work. Yep.
Okay. And it'll be a finance work session. If you are interested in either the Level Two or Level Three finance workshops, let Gabby know so she can get you signed up for those. Equity Committee meets virtually on December 16th, and Karina and Sean are committee members for that. School Improvement meets in January. I'm assuming it'll be virtual as well. And Karina and Nico are representatives for that. The LAU Committee meets in May. Nico and Jan are committee reps. There's a Foundation, Community Auditorium Foundation meeting in April. Mike, you've got two board policies. The next board meeting is on the 21st. What have we done tonight to improve education for the Marshalltown School District?
I think that the, the Saturday sessions and the learning extra, extra classes for Miller Middle School and the high school is a, is one of those attaboys you ought to give the, the principals for setting it up and the teachers for doing it. Especially in, in this time, having teachers commit more time to being with students is a, is a big deal and really good of them. Good job.
That's one of the things you can put in your good things happening in Marshalltown.
Right. And I, I saw Adam furiously scribbling notes as Jamie was talking about, you know, getting the good word about Marshalltown out. So that was good to see.
I really liked seeing the collaboration with Marshalltown Company. We were talking about with Mr. Arrevalo, with having those opportunities for, for the students and, you know, the last portion of our mission statement with providing the opportunity there with the personalized learning experiences. We know that there's some, I mean, you were just talking about it too, with the Marshalltown Community College. So having these tools and the support from our allies, the businesses, for the betterment of our community and our, our students, it was really nice and refreshing to hear and see.
And getting to talk to our legislators, especially about the need for the internet access, which is going to be really important.
It was a busy meeting, and thank you all for sustaining through it. My quote for this evening comes from Christie Martin. She is a Canadian poet. And in this time of COVID, she says, "We should all find a quiet place, a peaceful space, to bury the chaos and rest for a while." May you all find your place and rest. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
McGinnis Faltis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. The motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all.